Welcome, good evening everybody. It's great to be back for another edition of the Painesville area schools district livestream town hall. Welcome to everybody who's joining us either on YouTube Live or Facebook Live. I appreciate you taking some time out of your evening to learn a little bit more about what's going on at school and what's happening in the school district. Tonight, we've got two very important topics to discuss. The first one is an elementary initiative that is going on. We are in the process of opening up a new communications lab at our elementary school. So we're going to tackle that topic first. And then secondly, obviously, anybody who has driven by the secondary school, or for that matter, the elementary school this summer, we have a large scale facility project going on in both buildings. We'll spend probably the last 10 minutes or so tonight just going over kind of a live update as far as how construction is going, what tasks are being accomplished, and where things are going from there. So those are the two topics this evening. My pleasure to be joined by our elementary principal, Mrs. Mary Homberg. Welcome.
Thank you, Matt. It's a pleasure to be here.
All right, so I'll kind of turn it over to you. And if you want to start with the communications lab and kind of give some background and how everything got started with that.
Awesome. Okay, well, it's an exciting time for us here at Painesville area elementary schools. First of all, a great big shout out to the Painesville area community foundation for your grant that allowed us to complete the communications lab project. The communications lab is what was, what used to be our computer lab. And now that all of our Painesville area students are one to one, we have no need for that computer lab that many of us grew up with. You know, with the standard rows of stationary computers and the kids seated, you know, one and a half feet apart, or whatever that was. So we made up a plan and we've completely renovated that computer lab. And now we call it our communications lab.
All right, so this evening's format is very similar. I was supposed to do this with the intro. It's kind of funny. I have to have full disclosure. So before we started, Mary and I were just chatting a little bit. And so she had, she jinxed me, I think. She looked at me and she said, oh, Matt, do you still get nervous with these things? And my response was, well, after we get past the intro, it usually goes pretty well. And here, I missed the most important part of the intro. So I apologize. I'm going to rewind a little bit. This is an interactive town hall. So if you have questions, by all means, please post those questions in YouTube Live or Facebook Live. We will do our best to try and answer all questions. If we miss one, it's not our intent, but we are not perfect. And sometimes we will miss one, but we will try to answer all those questions. So feel free to answer those questions. Anything else about the communications lab?
All right, well, we'll wait until you ask me your first question.
All right, we have a short video also that's been produced and ready to go for the communications lab. So let's go ahead and roll that video and we'll be back.
All right, good morning. I'm here with steam coordinator Ben Borgeding, and he's going to kind of show us around the facility over here, the maker space at the elementary school a little bit. So Ben, do you want to tell us where we're at today?
Good morning, everybody. My name's Ben. Like Garrick said, I'm the steam coordinator here at the elementary. We're in the kind of collaboration area of our maker space. So you can see the our art carts with a lot of raw materials and kind of standalone activities. All right. And then as you get into this larger space, we have more tables than we would normally have. But this is where the students then are working and as much as they can collaborating on the projects that they're working on.
Perfect. So in this space, what would typically be on the tables on any given normal school day for your steam classes?
So the goal is to start with nothing, and then they have to gather their materials. So it really depends on the project.
And that's where they're gathering the materials from the bins over here. So all the different supplies are over here. And you know, as we look at that, there's crayons, there's yarn, there's string, there's popsicle sticks, construction paper, just a variety. So they take that material, you know, once they have an initial design, bring it to the table. And on the table, then they create their project.
Yeah, they start putting everything together, making a mess. And then it's cleaning up from there. And then we'll use this white table sometimes if for younger kids and whatnot to have more limited supplies to choose from. And then the Lego tables are generally used for Legos. Last year, we did a pretty cool project where we actually tipped them up at an angle and they used them for Lego marble maze, which was a lot of fun.
There's me. Awesome. So now we're in kind of the other half of the maker space. So what do we see on this side of the fence?
So this side of the maker space is kind of the prefab space. So once they have their ideas, and they've worked with them a little bit more, and they have kind of a more concrete idea of what that could actually turn into, or they need to build something, then they come back here where we have on this side, a lot of our tools, well, actually power tools, and more specific function stuff, plus a lot of extra clutter. We're just, things have to have a place to go right now when we're not using them. And we're still working on some storage solutions for that. So power tools are kind of on this side. And then over here, we have more of the, in this container, we have hammers, wrenches, screwdrivers.
Yep, all sorts of different stuff. So I did notice you have an abundance of cardboard over in this corner. Can you talk about what we use cardboard for around here?
So cardboard is an amazing raw material. You can do a lot of stuff with it. It's got a rigid structure. So when it comes to building things, it's just, it makes an amazing raw material. You can turn almost anything into something else with cardboard.
Yeah, I noticed that the bird barn up there, I think that was built back during a staff meeting a while back. And what are the like little blue screws?
Those are from a make do kit. So those are actually screws designed for connecting cardboard together. So it's like carpentry.
So obviously, we have two maker bots here. So they're working on something right now. Eddie, would you just want to tell us a little bit about the 3D printers and the uses around here?
Yeah, so the 3D printers run quite often. Mr. Wolf does a lot of projects with his fifth graders. And so they're, they're usually cranking out stuff for that. In terms of steam, we'll use them when students are creating a project and they need that special piece that, you know, doesn't exist, or would be hard for them to get on their own. So this is where we could print that piece for them.
So I know currently, the maker space over here is going through a name change. So eventually, it will not be maker space. So talking about renaming it, or it might be maker space. That is on the list. Otherwise, we have the Launchpad, Imagination Center, Innovation Station, the Collaboratory, Imagination Destination. So do you want to talk a little bit about the names and kind of the process?
Yeah, so it's kind of like I told the students, right now, it's called the maker space, but only really because other schools call similar spaces a maker space. And because it's a creative space, we can be creative with the name too. So we don't have to be the same as every other school. So I had asked the staff to come up with some naming options. And these are the six that the staff at actually both buildings came up with. And then the students will vote. And my goal is to do some sort of ranked voting, so that they can see how that works when you grade something on a scale of one, two, or three. And so maybe you don't get your first option, but your third option might come in and just to see how that affects the scores or the ranks that names are getting when they're voted on.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Borgeding, for the tour today. Any last words you want to tell us at all? Farewell?
Just keep making stuff.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. So today, Mr. Wolf's going to tell us a little bit about the new communications lab. So before we start, he is now in the old elementary computer lab, which used to be used for computer classes and have a bunch of computers in here. But with technology changing, it's now communications lab. And with COVID, our fifth graders are now using it as a classroom. So we can properly socially distance. So being that our fifth graders are in here, we can still use the new equipment. So Mr. Wolf, do you want to talk a little bit about the communications lab?
Yeah, so with our communications lab, it's a work in progress, trying to get it up and going, even though it's going to be a classroom, we are still getting it ready for a communications lab. For example, we have windows here and we need to put up some curtains type stuff. And so we got a team of fifth graders in here that are working on getting curtains made using the sewing machines in the maker space area. We also have a team that helps put together furniture and stuff like that. And they just put together one table. There's another, some other stuff coming in. So they'll be doing that. Just getting the stuff ready to go for communications lab. They're still kind of experimenting where we want to put up the TV monitors, put the podcast booth, we're going to kind of play around with that. So these guys are kind of like guinea pigs and helping try and set up the best possible setup for our communication lab.
So we're getting there with communications lab. So this is just the start of it, but probably maybe December, we'll do a kind of an update, or January, do an update and show off where everything will be and where it found its home. So anything else you'd like to add today?
None of that, other than the fifth graders are really excited about not only getting this set up for a communication lab, but also actually using it.
Yeah. And once this does get rolling, it'll obviously be used for more than just the fifth grade. You know, it'll be all the elementary students are able to use it. Just with the COVID regulations, it has become a fifth grade classroom for the foreseeable future. And so that'll probably change again as time moves on. So thank you, Mr. Wolf. Have a wonderful day.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. A quick shout out quickly to Garrick Grace, Ben Borgeding, Colin Wolf. Thank you very much for your assistance with putting together a little snippet of the maker space, communications lab, and what how that space has been used at the elementary school. So Mary, a couple of questions, I guess. So first of all, maybe just a little bit about kind of the why behind a communications lab?
Awesome. Well, we know that our kids need the soft skills to be able to effectively communicate. And so like I said before, we don't, we all have one to one devices now. So what could we do next to help our kids to communicate in different modes? They don't need to be sitting in front of a computer that doesn't move. And so then the team got together, those are the people that Mr. Bullard just talked about. So Garrick Grace and Colin Wolf, Ben Borgeding, Matt, myself, Jonah Johnson. And we just had some really good conversations about what can we use in this space? What's our dream? What's our pie in the sky? And what's most appropriate for kids at the pre K through fifth grade levels? And then we, we just thought about out of the box kinds of things. Like what skills will our kids need when they go to the middle school and high school? What will they need beyond that? What can we use as introduction for these kids? And how can we tap into their unique interests and their unique talents and give them a space to do that? And that's how this all unfolded. We just want the kids to be prepared for the future. So that became our why. We had the space available. And fortunately, Painesville area schools is prioritizing technology and those technical skills. So let's work that into our communication skills too.
So being in the elementary building on a daily basis, I'm sure you've seen a lot of different things going on in that space. But do you maybe just highlight a couple things that in your mind, as you, as you either observed them, or maybe took part in some of them, just kind of struck you as interesting? What's the most interesting learning activities you've seen, either in the maker space or in the communications lab?
Cool. Well, the communications lab is easy because our furniture and most of the equipment just came in within the last two weeks. So Mr. Wolf has kindly sought out the resources that his students have to offer. He found, as you saw in the video, a group of students who were interested in sewing and had sewing abilities. So he assigned them the task of making curtains for the bar height tables. You saw two kids that were sitting there that were working. And the curtains will provide that visual barrier between the communications lab and the media center. So those kids are actively involved. They got to, you know, order fabric. And well, first, of course, they had to do the measuring and decide what they'd all need. And they ordered fabric, they ordered thread. Then there was a group of kiddos that were in there that were actually assembling the tables for the audio booth. So they had to go to the maker space and find what tools they needed and bring them back and put that table together. So that was really exciting to see. On the other hand, when we go and look in the maker space with Mr. Borgeding, I'm seeing lots of interesting things with teaching kids the basics of using a device. So how do they log in? How do they use clever? What are some sites that they can use that will help them use the, I just lost my train of thought, the 3D printers? Those kids are working on some pretty interesting things and being taken to the next level through our technology process. Mr. Borgeding also offers different opportunities for kids. So some may be interested in the engineering piece of how do I build, you know, a skyscraper? And then they're watching a video that shows them how to do that, while other kids actually want to build a skyscraper. So they're in a program in Tinkercad on their devices and they're creating 3D skyscrapers that they can then send off and print. I mean, I think that's pretty cool for this stage of the game in a hybrid learning model.
Excellent. So it's the natural next question then. So what's next? I mean, where do you take this? And how do you leverage it for, for most efficient learning or to maximize student skills?
Absolutely. Well, we're in hybrid now. So Mr. Wolf's classroom and his students are the fortunate kiddos that get to be in there 24/7 during our school day. So they're getting the benefit of the communications lab all to themselves right now. But moving forward, that's a really good opportunity for Mr. Wolf and those kids to become mentors for the rest of their fifth grade peers. And then again, to take what they've learned and apply it with our youngest learners in our pre K through four setting. So that's going to be a really, really nice opportunity to, to share what they've learned. We also plan to do our morning announcements live. We can livestream them. We got some GoPros and we've got the ability now to be able to do that. So moving forward, you know, again, it's only been two weeks. We plan to do that instead of using the intercom system that we do every morning at 8:20. So that'll be an exciting piece for us as well. There are just lots of little things coming up that'll allow the expansion of what we're doing in there from slow motion animation to videos in front of the blue screen, to the audio podcasts and that whole design process of coming up with an idea and then designing it, giving it a trial run, going back and editing and fixing it, putting it through the production process, and then sharing it out. It's just going to be fantastic for our learners.
Excellent. Excellent. That's definitely exciting. It's, it's interesting to, to go by those spaces. I mean, you walk by, whether it's the communications lab at the elementary school, or the maker space, or you come over to the secondary building and you look at the innovation center, you look at the remodeled CTE space. And it just, it's incredibly powerful and exciting to be able to see kids engaged in something that they're passionate about, that they really care about, that there's intrinsic motivation to, I want to succeed, I want to excel. And it's just a tremendously powerful experience to be able to, to see that.
Absolutely. And then the kids that come up and are super excited to share with you because they are just, they're beyond thrilled with what their production process is or what they've already produced. And those kids that are so into what they're doing, they don't even notice there's another person in the room.
Excellent. Reminder, if you have questions, you can submit your questions. We will try to answer as many questions as we can this evening. We are going to transition now and talk a little bit about the facility project. We do have some, some images and a short presentation that will get up on the screen. So I'm going to just walk you through kind of a snapshot over what's been happening since the, I believe it's October 2nd is how far back I went. So roughly, it's kind of a snapshot as to what's happening in the month of October with the facility project. This first image, you can see that, that roof deck that was installed there, that is viewing, that's looking to the north. So the person who's actually taking that photo is on our existing roof. And they are looking to the north. And that, that new roof deck is now what is going to be the new automotive shop. You'll get a couple snapshots of what the inside is going to look like here in just a bit too. So moving forward, you can see that during October, there was a lot of underground work that was, was being completed. The underground work included getting some electrical roughed in, but also a lot of the plumbing needs that needed to be completed in the community center, multipurpose room, the new community head office space, the atrium entrance, as well as that automotive center that we, we saw already. The block work, October was filled with masons out in the, in the area around the construction site. It was quite impressive actually to watch this group really move kind of very systematically through the whole construction project and see them go from space to space. And actually, they, they hit a couple of snags that were outside of their control with, with some weather and some other things that it was pretty impressive to watch them just be pretty fluid and nimble and pick up and go and keep going where they could and come back to what they needed to later. You can kind of get a snapshot here. So this image is actually, it's probably technically what is going to be inside. The, the person taking this photo would be inside the multipurpose wrestling room space. When it's finished, that's where they will be. But it's a, gives you a good look as to the burnished block that will, we're trying to match up to the existing block that's in the hallway as you go towards into the main entrance of the auditorium. So you can kind of see that burnished look that'll be on the main entrance of the community center. And the width of that, as you look at that image, that width of that burnished block there, that also gives you an idea of how wide that lobby and atrium space as it juts out over to that community center, how wide that space is going to be as well. Looking back, now you're, you're heading, looking to the south. So the, the walls and windows that you see, just to the left of that ladder, that's actually looking into the existing fitness center. So what's going to be in these two spaces here is a cardio room. And then there will also be a group fitness room are the, the two pieces that are going to be in this space in the image. The community education offices are going to transition to the, the new addition. So this image here is actually facing west. And the, the community head office will kind of be that focal office as people would enter the, the main entrance on the west side. This image, the photographer in this image is standing just probably in the lobby atrium area. You can see all the PVC that's coming up, that's roughed in plumbing. So you can see where there will be restrooms. And so there's a custodial room that has, has water and a drain connected to it. And then if the image would pan a little further to the right, you would see a lot more plumbing because that's where the main rest area or restroom area for the addition would be. The contractors have been busy in our earlier October. And as you can see, you're probably going to be able to date these photos pretty well because there's no snow in them yet. But the contractors were busy getting the final grade on the community center floor. This is just prior to the pouring of the cement slab that went into the community center. Here's an inside photo of the automotive shop. Again, this is that roof deck that we started with. You can see the ceiling joists, you can see the roughed in electrical getting, getting going. And then this image was taken just prior to the finishing of the rough in work, which then cleared the way for the cement floor to be poured as well. So this is a kind of a main point here because that the hole in the wall, that's going to be a clear overhead door. That actually will be the connection point for our metal shop. So the CTE space that went through the remodel this summer, will the, the remodeled CTE space and the auto shop are going to connect through this, this corridor, this kind of, I don't know what the best way to describe it. I'd call it a breezeway, but it's the wrong term. But it's just this small passageway that'll, will happen between the two. This will be structured in such a way that we could actually get materials delivered for, say, the metal shop if we wanted to. Could be delivered through the auto shop. In fact, you'd be able to get all the way from the auto shop back to metals, back to woods, with delivering raw materials through the series of overhead doors that are, are installed. The exterior photo, there'll be three bays in the auto shop. This image here also focuses on the roof. The new roof was installed above that decking that we started with as well. Again, the, the weather was cooperating. So this was probably a week and a half ago or so when they finished up that, that auto shop roofing. The multipurpose wrestling room, they've also installed the, the roof deck over, over that. So the, the ceiling joists are in and that roof deck is, is installed as well. There's a piece then that is one of the features of this. There will be a mezzanine of that, that wrestling room, multipurpose space. This mezzanine is going to house all of our mechanical equipment. It'll be our, our Um, it'll be our, our um, entrance point for the uh, fiber connection, for our internet coming into the building. Um, it'll really warehouse all of the, the uh, guts of the building will be in that um, mezzanine. The uh, just prior to the, the uh, snow, they did have an opportunity to get the cement slab poured in the community center. Um, that's obviously a large piece of concrete that was poured. They did that in um, two, two sections. Um, they took the, the west half uh, one day and then they came back and finished it up with the east half um, the, the following day. Uh, there you can see a little bit more. Now this is closer to being at the base of that mezzanine. You can see the, the steel joists that are the closest to this uh, who's ever taking this photo. Um, though that would be the floor of that um, the deck that that uh, mezzanine will sit on. And if you follow that steel um, uh, column up, you can see where the, there's that um, the, the roof is also connected and put together. So it gives you a little bit of an idea as far as how um, tall that, that mezzanine will be. Here's an in, uh, interior photo of the automotive room, um, or the shop. They had the, the painting completed. So the joists and decking, um, they were all painted the bright white. It will match the CTE space. Um, this image gives you a little bit of a, an idea about the um, the clearance that we're talking about. I believe um, the, the headroom in this auto shop will be 17 feet from the bottom of, of the joyce system to the floor. To give you an idea, in our um, in our current auto shop, I believe the most clearance that um, we currently have is about 11 feet, just shy of 11 feet. So it'll be significant, a significant improvement. Um, and really designed how an, an auto shop should be designed in order for lifts to, to operate uh, efficiently. Here you can see the final concrete slab flooring has been poured in that automotive shop. Um, again, the, the floors have a, a series of, of floor drains in them like uh, would be standard in, in any automotive shop. Um, there'll be three bays in here. Um, the three bays will actually contain four lifts. One of the bays will have two lifts in it. The other ones will just have one. Um, again, if you have questions, by all means, you can, can uh, submit those questions. We will certainly try to, to get to those as well. Now you can see some images with some snow. Um, so a little uh, this is actually work that was taking place last week. Um, doesn't look like a lot going on with this photo, but the important thing there is you can see the foam paneling that's starting to uh, be installed. Uh, that is work that continues uh, today. I had gone through or gone by um, the, the uh, construction site and, and they continue to work on that foam paneling. That's uh, really going to be a big portion of the next couple of weeks with the facility project. So well, I know that, you know, everybody's kind of keeping an eye to watch the progress and, and I think what's going to happen here over the next couple of weeks is the progress is going to slow a little bit because they're talking about really dedicating time to get that um, community center um, paneled. The roof on the community center insulated and then the, the um, the top of that roof complete. Give you some perspective as you kind of look at those construction photos, you can take a peek at, at what the, the final product. So this would be a, a photo from the west uh, side of the school. And that would be a, an image of that um, the new addition. Um, the, the logo on the building is just there to represent that we are putting a logo. Um, that is my uh, um, limited technology skills. And so I, I had, I, I put that logo there just so people understand there will be a logo. That is not necessarily what the logo is going to look like. Um, you'll have to forgive me. I, I'm dealing with some limited tech skills. So that's, that's what I uh, came up with on that. Um, again, I, that's kind of where things are at with the construction project. Um, the board recently reviewed the uh, budget and the thing that I can proudly report to all community members is the project remains on budget and um, you know, I don't want to get the car too far in front of the horse, but so far the, the weather has cooperated and and uh, our, our crews and, and uh, construction companies have been doing a, a real diligent job of, of staying on, on their calendar and, and on their um, time management. And so it's, it's really worked out well. They are on track. The entire project is right now scheduled to be turned over to the school district uh, in the middle of August of 2021. And that continues to be a, a good target date that we will be ready to, to open up that, the new addition and the, the new portions of the facility. So again, it's exciting. It's uh, always uh, interesting to see what gets accomplished. We will uh, be back for another town hall at the end of November. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but um, just so everybody understands, we will be targeting sometime around the last Monday of the month in order to do a Facebook Live, a YouTube Live Town Hall. So if you want to just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, know that at the end of each month, um, there should be a, a new topic coming out. Um, as long as the construction project continues on, so through August of 2021, uh, the community can, can basically expect a, a project update uh, at the end of each, each Monday as well at each of those sessions. Um, so with that, I haven't seen any questions. Mary, have you seen any questions?
I haven't seen any questions.
Okay. Well, we want to thank you for taking time on a Monday to uh, check out how our facility project is going. And also to learn a little bit about our communications lab, makerspace at the elementary school. It is tremendously exciting to see the opportunities that, that students will have in that space. Mrs. Holmberg, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
And I hope everybody tunes back in next month. Take care and stay well.